I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Tuesday, July 11, 2023, at 7:03 PM. The Planning Board is convening this meeting by video conference using the Zoom application. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone attending this meeting and take attendance of members. Rob Almiata.
Here.
Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Sue Felshen. Abby Flanagan.
Here.
Mark Hiddings will not be here tonight, and myself, Linda Miller, I'm here. Elizabeth Hughes is unable to be here this evening due to a family emergency. Each vote tonight will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during a public participation period should use the Zoom raised hand function or star nine on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use a star six from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities, and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The board welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. Written materials for this meeting are posted on the Planning Board section of the town's website. We'll now go to the first item on the agenda. That will be for a definitive subdivision public hearing in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 41, Section 81, and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review the definitive subdivision plan application of EMS Development for improvement of a new roadway and for the creation of four new building lots at 80X and 1053 Main Street, parcels numbers 3730 and 3734. Will the applicant or their representatives introduce themselves? I'm looking to see.
I think, I'm sorry, Matt, you were. Yes. Good evening. My name is Matt Seppi from EMS Development.
Oh, hi, Matt. And I believe you'll be providing the Planning Board with an overview of your proposal?
Yes, what I'd like to do tonight is just provide the board as well as other community members just a initial introduction to the proposed project. And I'll be speaking on some points along with Paul Kerschner from Stamsky and McNary who's with me. And if there's any other legal related questions, my attorney, Chris Elfin, is also here if needed.
Great. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone for joining tonight and taking time to participate in the call. Thank you. Again, my name is Matt Seppi from EMS Development. And what our hope is tonight is to just provide an initial introduction to the proposed project at 1053 Main Street and ADX, the parcel that abuts it, known as ADX. Heather, would you be able to call up plans from the definitive subdivision plans that we submitted so we could use those as speaking points?
Yes.
So if possible, if we could just maybe call up the first sheet of the definitive subdivision plan, and we could just look at the locus so we could familiarize everybody where the property is located? Thank you. So as you can see, the area that's highlighted around in black is the two parcels that make up the proposed site. The site has one smaller parcel that has an existing single-family home on it. Hasn't been occupied in eight or nine years anyways. The home is currently vacant. And that's the smaller parcel that abuts Main Street. ADX is the parcel that is to the side of it that connects over to its Old Bridge Road and connects over to where Staffordshire Lane is, and also abuts some other properties along Main Street and Old Bridge Road. The two parcels combined together make up approximately 2.2 acres. For a little just history on the site, Heather, would it be possible to call up the plan from 1899? So this plan is the recorded plan from 1899 when this area was originally laid out and subdivided. As you can see, there's Main Street there and right with the triangle where parcel label number eight is, that road that cuts up to the right is Old Bridge Road. The two parcels that are numbered 12 and 13 are where a duplex exists today. That's 1063 Main Street. The space next to that is what is a paper road that's been laid out on the site that connects Main Street out to Old Bridge Road. It goes out to Old Bridge Road between Parcels 3 and 4, and then it intersects across the property in front of Parcels 15 and 16, heading over to what is now known as Staffordshire Lane. Maybe if we could go to Sheet 3 now, Heather, that would be helpful? So this sheet here shows the two parcels. Parcel number 3734 is the one that has the single-family house. There is a pool there, a poolhouse shed, things of that nature that exist on that current lot. As you can see, the ADX parcel goes behind the houses on Main Street along Staffordshire over to Old Bridge. In the dash line that cuts through the property is defining where the paper road that was laid out from the previous plan in 1899 comes into the property and heads over to Staffordshire Lane. If we could go to Sheet 2, Heather, that would be helpful? So this shows a little bit more definition to what we're proposing to do. These parcels are within a zoning district C, so those require 10,000 square foot individual lots to be generated. What we're proposing to do is to add on to the existing single-family home, which is identified as Lot 1, and make that lot a 10,555 square foot lot. In addition to that, we're proposing to improve the road within the paper roadway at a smaller width. The existing roadways, 40 feet wide, we're proposing 18-foot wide road. And that would create frontage for additional single-family lots number 2, 3, and 4 that range from 14,000 to 17,000 square feet. What our current plan right now is, where the existing single-family home is, we would use that existing sewer line for the new dwelling that would be created there. The other parcels, the other homes on Parcels 2, 3, 4, and 5, we are planning for onsite disposal systems. Currently, also going to plan to be building them all electric. The last few houses I've built in town have been all electric, and it's going pretty smoothly. So I'm going to continue to do that. So we're not proposing to bring any gas or propane onto the site. Heather, if you could go maybe to Sheet 4, that would be helpful, please? So this sheet has a lot more information on it that I will turn over to Paul to talk to some of the more specific technical components in just a minute. The next, sorry, number four. Yep. So it's hard to make out for folks that are just seeing this for the first time. But a couple of things that I did want to highlight within this plan. We're proposing to only have access to the site from Main Street, which it's identified as Roadway A that is coming in from Main Street. Roadway A would come in, head towards Old Bridge Road, but we're proposing to stop the road right past the last dwelling on the newly created Lot Number 5. I think we feel pretty strongly about the fact that we don't really want to connect that to Old Bridge Road and introduce any cut-through traffic for the site. I've been working on this for quite a while and in many discussions with neighbors and other folks in the neighborhood. I think they would probably agree that it feels strongly about not connecting that road over to Old Bridge Road because no one feels it's appropriate to introduce any traffic in there that doesn't need to be coming in to just access the homes. We would continue the proposed road where Roadway B is identified, and it would head over to Staffordshire Lane. It stops short of their property, and we have a turnaround that we would provide there for the emergency access vehicles. As I mentioned, the roadway that was laid out in 1899, it is a 40-foot wide road. We are proposing an 18-foot wide road. Trying to keep as much down with the asphalt and so forth as we can to try to minimize, you know, with the road that's only going to be servicing for dwelling units. With that, maybe I think I will turn it over to Paul, and I'll let him touch on some of the technical components of the site, and then we can turn it over to 20 questions that you may have.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Kersner from Stamsky and McNary, who are the engineers and surveyors for the project. I'm sorry if you can hear my dog barking. He'll stop eventually if he can. So I don't want to be too repetitive with what Matt has said. But this project here, we have two proposed roads. We identify them as Road A and Road B. Road A coming off of Main Street, Road B coming off of the proposed Road A. Subdivision consists of five lots. So like Matt said, we are proposing onsite septic systems for the five lots. The lot that will be on sewer is the lot containing the existing house. So we have graded, or we have proposed grades in accordance with the subdivision rules as it pertains to the proposed roadways. Both of these roadways are less than 5% slopes. In terms of some water management, we do have a couple of areas of subsurface chambers proposed, one of which is located sort of straddling the shared lot line between the proposed lots 1 and 2, the other being within the roadway A right-of-way. Two of the lots are equipped with roof drywells. Those are lots 4 and 5. We are proposing a water main coming off of Old Bridge. At the moment, the intent is to avoid any significant excavation within Main Street in order to limit disruption to Main Street. And then from that, this site is on a hill. On this site, we're sort of balancing complying with these subdivision rules as it relates to vertical curvature and grades with the desire to limit earth movement as much as possible. Each of these lots is provided with an attached garage. And we have made an effort to sort of limit that decorating, but whereas we're working on a hill, there is some limitation to how much you can avoid that earth movement. I want to leave it at that. If you have any specific questions as it relates to different portions of the site or different aspects of the application or proposed design, I'm happy to answer them. But I don't want to say too much. Going on and on because I could forever. Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I would like to just note is we have just started receiving feedback from the various town departments. Heather's been kind enough to forward over multiple emails yesterday and today. So we have not had a chance to digest any of the feedback from the town departments yet, but we will be consolidating all their notes. And Paul and I and the rest of the team will be working with the different departments accordingly as we move forward, try to address any questions they may have. I think at that, we could open it up to any questions.
I don't know if this was something that you authored or not. I think it was attributed to Stamsky and McNary in terms of the list of waivers. And I thought maybe you could take a minute just to familiarize everyone with that here at the outset so we can be thinking about it.
Yeah, so I can go through the list of waivers. So the majority, if not all of these waivers, are related to this being a paper street with a defined right-of-way width. So just to take you through it, the subdivision regulations call for a minimum of 50-foot wide right-of-way. The existing right-of-way is 40 feet wide, so we have requested a waiver to that. The minimum pavement width, according to the subdivision rules and regs, is 26 feet. We are proposing an 18-foot wide roadway with one foot caud burns on the edges, so a total traveled way of 20 feet. And that's in an effort to reduce the amount of impervious area created by this project. We are requesting a waiver to the minimum centerline radius. So the subdivision regs require 225 feet. As this is an existing right-of-way, it is not feasible to provide that 225-foot minimum horizontal curve radius. The plan calls for 70-foot centerline curve radius on Road B and 100-foot centerline radius on Road A. We've requested a waiver from the requirement to provide a cul-de-sac circle at the end of dead-end roads. Again, this is in an effort to reduce the amount of impervious area. Also, there isn't sufficient space within the right-of-way to provide this cul-de-sac circle. We are providing a fire truck turnaround on Lot 2, and we have provided an auto-turn analysis to demonstrate that it is of sufficient dimension to accommodate the conquered ladder truck. We're asking for a waiver to the sidewalk requirement. Again, this is in an effort to reduce the amount of impervious area on the site. This will be five houses off of these new roadways. There'll be limited traffic. There's no, we're not proposing a connection to Old Bridge Road, so it will not serve as any sort of cut-through or should not serve as any sort of cut-through. So sidewalks do not seem appropriate for the scale of this development. And lastly, street trees. There are areas where we cannot provide the minimum or the street trees every 50 feet as required by the subdivision regulations. This is due to the existing right-of-way. We have sort of dealt the hand that we are dealt when it comes to the dimensions of that. So we have provided them as much as we possibly can, but they don't quite meet that minimum 50-foot offset between required by the subdivision regs. So that was all. Thank you.
Great. Then if there are questions from members of the Planning Board at this point? Sue?
I have a few small questions. First, I note that Water and Sewer Department pointed out that in order to bring in water mains from Old Bridge, you will be required to maintain a right-of-way. Looking at the plan, or I shouldn't say right-of-way, but access from Old Bridge. Looking at the plan, it seems like that might require cutting down some number of trees and then preventing any new trees from growing there. So I'm not looking for an answer tonight. I'm just looking for us to find out later on what will be going on there. Second of all, I see that you have provided a turnaround area at the end of Roadway A for fire trucks, but I'm wondering what the fire truck access is for Lot 5? If fire truck access, if it can be parked at the angle of where the two roadways split, maybe that's close enough, but I didn't note that in your application. And my only third point was, this is a very small thing. On Form C, Item 5, which is site characteristics and drainage, the checkbox for soil removal is checked "no", but on the very next line, you talk about soil removal. So I think you just accidentally checked the wrong checkbox, which seems like it may be fixed.
Thank you.
That's all I have at this time.
Are there questions or thoughts at this point from the board? If not, then let's see if there's any public comment. More questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss? Abby? Did I miss you? Sorry.
I just had a question. Looking as you went through the waivers, you know, they're predominantly kind of right-of-way, space-related issues. So the width of the roadway, the cul-de-sac, sidewalks, street trees, all of that. And the kind of the theme of them seems to be not sufficient space plus a desire to limit impermeable surface. And my question would be, if we didn't grant or we didn't recommend granting waivers for all of those or some combination thereof, would it reduce the lot sizes under the 10,000 minimum? So my question is, if they said no waivers to anything, all of the requirements need to be met, does that impact the number of lots and the lot sizes? And is that part of the reason why some of these waivers are necessary? I can't do the calculations for all of that in my head. But that's given the number of waivers that are kind of space-related and roadway-related. I'm just curious as to how that would flesh out.
So in short, no. The right-of-way is 40 feet wide, 26 feet of pavement, a five-foot sidewalk, even with a grass strip in between. That, you know, will that be 34 feet plus curves, 36 feet, it's still going to be less than the 40-foot right-of-way that we provided. And then even if we were to center the roadway itself on the on the right-of-way centerline, which would push the sidewalk onto the lots. We haven't designed this, so I'm going off my personal feeling, but we would more than likely provide an easement to locate that sidewalk along the frontage. The right-of-way is what it is. We just want to reduce the impervious surface as much as possible. So we'd be able to accommodate whatever dimension, you know, in accordance with the subdivision regs.
Are there questions from the board? Then I thought I saw a question, a hand up from a member of the public. And I'm maybe that was the same as Abby's question? Okay.
I see.
I'm sorry. I see. Matt Ryan?
Hello, this is Matt Ryan. Thank you to the chair. I am at 45 Staffordshire Lane, which is Concord Village, an adjacent property. I am opposing this development, and I have two concerns I want to raise. One is I'd like the Planning Board to keep in mind not just removal of forest environment, but also the impact of whether a green corridor is broken, which would have an exaggerated impact on wildlife. So in particular, if forest is removed along the roadway to Old Bridge Road, that could break a green corridor that would have greater impact than just the removal of the specific trees. On my second concern, I wanted to draw the board's attention to the draft and vision Concord Plan dated June 20th, '23. One of the points in this plan, 4.3.4, reads discourage the demolition of smaller homes and their replacement with larger, more expensive residences. So that contradicts the plan before us today. There's an existing residence that could potentially be rehabilitated, one might think, to be an affordable house. And there'd be the creation of five unaffordable $1.5 million homes. And as Concord is struggling to keep up with the state's 10% requirement of affordable houses, this would push us in the wrong direction. And looking at how unaffordable Concord has become, we should be trying to exceed that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Brutonesso?
Yes, Ray Brutonesso, 1,001 Main Street. So my understanding, this is going to be a public street, but they want the street to be narrow. In addition, don't want sidewalks. As a pet owner down the street, it's, you're, and I pick up after my dog. It's creating an area to walk that you don't want people to walk on the way. You're laying it out. We are making it a public street, but we don't want anybody else to walk down, to go down the street. We're going to make the roads narrow. I understand that and appreciate that. But likewise, we're not going to have sidewalks. That's my major point, but at this point, I haven't been able to review all the waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea McClatchy. I can't see. Andrea McClatchy. Thank you.
It's Andrea McClatchy. Yes, I'm in a butter for 30 years on Old Bridge Road. And I would echo, I have three questions, but I would very much echo the question about the environmental corridor. And I can speak very specifically to it, having lived here for 30 years and understood much about that environmental corridor. I'm also very concerned about the trees and the question of whether behind the septic system proposed add-ins, those trees are designed to stay there or whether the goal is to clearcut the whole thing, which is apparently what the neighbors have been told by the developer. And then finally, I think my question really is, why isn't it going to be town sewer? It's seen, all of this seems sort of backward thinking. Most, many towns around us are going to only town sewer. So why would we do that and add the potential environmental impact and the likelihood that those sewage systems will fail along with the unnecessary cutting of trees in order to do that?
Thank you, Ms. McClatchy. Pamela Drit?
Pamela Drit, 13, Border Road. I also am interested in, could we not have on-town sewer and duplexes instead of large, single-family dwellings? I applaud the developer doing all-electric. I think that's very important. Thank you. But and is there anywhere where we can see which trees are going to remain? Any?
I can point you towards the, and we can look at it. I can be more specific if we look at it together. But the Erosion and Tenement Control Plan, which is the last sheet of the plan set, we don't identify each tree that is to remain specifically, but we do define the limit of work, and we have located all the trees on site, so.
Paul, if we have, if Heather has the ability to call up Sheet 4 again, and we could try to better clarify. We're certainly not proposing to try to clearcut the whole site. So to try to best describe, it's challenging to see again when it's everybody's first time looking at this plan. But as you look where lots number 3, 4, and 5 are, you can see after the proposed grading that we have in there, there's a little bubbled line that follows along that grading right there. We're sort of using that as our line of demarcation for no additional work. So all the trees and the topography and everything behind that line going up to the hill, we're not planning to remove. We're not planning to remove or do any work in that particular area. All the area would be in front of that belt bubbled area heading down towards the proposed roadway. I do think behind that bubbled area, there are a lot of trees that are down on the ground and so forth. And I would be willing to work with the local butters if there's downed trees that they would like to have cleaned up and things of that nature. It's, it's pretty wild back in there as far as invasive materials also. So if there was any invasives that they would prefer to have cleaned up, that's something we could consider doing. But our primary goal is from that area heading up the slope, the rest of the hill, we're just going to be leaving that in its natural state.
So can you point to me where the trees that are going, that are there now are going to stay there?
The ones that are, as we say, above that bubble line heading up the hill, those trees would all remain in place. And we're not proposing any grading or anything of that nature to take place up there.
But on the other side of the bubble?
Those areas, yes, that's where the proposed work would be. And we would have to be removing trees in order to construct the roadway and the houses. Not on every one of the lots, as I've met with different butters. As we get further into it, we're going to be looking at trees along the perimeter of the lot in between the proposed lots and the butters lots. And we're going to collectively work together to see which trees we would like to try to keep that are along the property lines. The middle of the property doesn't have as many trees. A lot of them are along the perimeter like at lot two. For example, there's some that are but the house is on Main Street. So we're going to look to try to see which ones there we might be able to keep as we get further along. And additionally, be working with the butters to try to identify anything that could be helpful from a landscaping buffering perspective when that time comes in the future.
And is there a reason why you've decided to do septic instead of town sewer? Is it not possible to do town sewer?
I wouldn't say it's not possible. It's just the soil material that's on the site is very adequate for subject system. So that's what we're proposing to do. I have not investigated with water and sewer, the ability to connect the other lots onto the sewer system.
Respectfully, would you please look into it?
Thank you, Ms. Drit. Scott Richardson, please.
Scott Richardson, two sixty Elsinore Street. Question, will you be needing a, to request a waiver from the zoning board of appeals for the earth removal? Yes. Thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anne?
My name is Anne Peasens. I'm at ten sixty three Main Street. I'm a butter to the right of way. If we can actually pull up the plan from eighteen ninety nine, I can show you where I am. It's actually relevant to some of the questions people have been asking. Okay. So on this plan, you see Main Street on the left. And then that right of way, that's sort of Y shaped. I live in plot number twelve, and I also own thirteen and fourteen. Thirteen and fourteen are very wooded right now. That will remain wooded for people who are asking questions about wildlife corridor and greenery. I don't know if that puts anybody's mind at ease at all. The other thing I'd like to say is I do appreciate that Mr. Seppi has been very proactive in meeting with the butters. He met with myself and my husband several times to share his plans. And was very straightforward in saying that of all the butters were, were significantly affected because right now we need access to the right of way to park our cars. Our driveways on lot twelve, we come off Main Street, go up that right of way and then park. So Matt was pretty clear about how we would lose access while some of the roadwork is happening. And he's been, I have to say, very proactive in working with us and trying to figure out solutions. So I do want to commend him for that. I think he's been quite good actually. About trying to speak to the, all the butters and, and figure out some workarounds. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peasens. Mary Hartman?
Thank you, Linda. My name is Mary Hartman. I live at sixteen Concord Green. I'm also a member of the select board, but I'm speaking tonight as in a butter. I have a question. When I look at this plot of land, it occurs to me that this would be a perfect place for a PRD. Because we could have, you know, cluster housing and we could have more open space around the perimeter of the housing. And so my question is, was, was that considered? And does the town offer any incentives to developers to, to do PRDs as opposed to more single family lots? Because I, I know that that's part of our, our smart growth strategy. So I've got two questions, Linda.
I can answer the first one in relation to the PRD. As I mentioned earlier, I, I have been working on this site for a while, six, seven years, maybe. And one of the original proposals I had, I did look at a potential for a PRD. I've done a PRD in town before, back about two thousand fifteen. And I thought that one worked out well. And I thought that this site originally with its water center location and the amenities of the train station and so forth might lend itself to a PRD. But after working with the, the butters and the, and the folks in the neighborhood, I just came to the conclusion that it wasn't something, the additional density of more families in there is not something that they felt was acceptable. So I did modify the approach from doing a planned residential development to try to look at the minimal amount of density that we could put in there. And that would just be, you know, lots via single family homes laid out with around the paper road. So I did look at it from a PRD away a while back, but did, but changed due to concerns from existing neighbors.
Linda, can I have a follow on question or?
Yes, click us, please.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Linda. So explain to me, so a PRD means you would have, right now you've got five units going in that, on that land. Is that correct? And, and a PRD would mean you'd have to have more than five units?
Potentially, yes. I mean, I think I, it was, it was a while ago when I looked at it, so I can't remember how many units we had in when we looked at it.
Your comment about density and you, you could have a PRD with the same number of units.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Do we have incentives to, for that at all? Does anyone, Linda, do you know?
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by incentives.
I don't, I don't know what I mean either. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Maxim Yarchak. I apologize if I didn't get that right.
It is correct. My name, Maxim Yarchak. I live at fifty fourth Staffordshire Lane. And I just want to bring to attention this development will impact thirty six families. It is like twenty six families like in our condominium and also ten families is like around those woods. And the woods on the map, on the plan is look like a white space. In real life, it has like a very rich ecosystem. And I would really encourage to come and visit the place. And I have lived here like for some years. And I saw like a lot of animals are going around our property using like wooded area and going to that piece of forest. And we have seen foxes, coyotes, turkey, owl and large birds are flying around our condominium and also hunting inside, inside those woods. And those birds look like eagle or hawk. I don't know exactly the names of the birds. And we's removing five thousand cubic yard of dirt. It would destroy a whole ecosystem there. It just kind of feel like it, it'd be a crime to destroy the ecosystem of those woods. And the land as well surrounded with hills and a lot of water going to that land. And they are like, we pretty often hear frogs, like sounds. It might be even like wetland, become a wetland. I don't know exactly, but we hear like a lot of frogs. Some in winter, in, in summertime, in evening. I just want to bring attention to this like environment impact of the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yarchak. David?
Yeah, hi. My name is David Fitzgerald. I live at ten seventy three Main Street. I'm curious, what was my curious about? I just forgot what I was curious about. Oh, what is PRD? Thank you. That's all I had.
It's a planned residential development and it is different type of development where you can have a cluster of housing. And surrounded by some open space as opposed to a simple subdivision. And, but you can find more information on that on the Concord Planning Department's website.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. I think we've gone through everyone who had a first question. And so let's go back to Ray.
I apologize if my hand was up. I didn't hit lower.
Oh, no problem. And Andrea, do you have a follow on question?
Yes, I just want to go back to the environmental question. I wondered in, and I want to echo Mr. Reactions comments. It's actually the tree frogs that are a major piece of the ecosystem back there that buffer us from the noise of Route two from May until August. And it will change the entire sound and dynamic and feel of this neighborhood to lose them. And my, my question is, there's a box on one of the forms where you check yes or no about an environmental impact or a wildlife impact. And I wanted to know what the criteria upon which checking that box yes or no is and where we can read about what that criteria is and when it's dated for the town. How does that, it's checked no, what, that there is no wildlife or impact? How do we understand that, that criteria?
I'm afraid that our town planner isn't here tonight to give you that answer. But we will get back to you with it. Thank you. Let's see, Robert Andrews? Do you have a question, Mr. Andrews? Or a comment? Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Andrews, if you have a comment? Or could you put your hand down if? There you are. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Can you unmute yourself? There may be a little red microphone at the bottom. There you go.
Everybody can hear me and see me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I'm an immediate butter. My wife and I live in a townhouse that goes right up against the, the hillside that people have repeatedly talked about. We know because we have a deck and, and sit out there on it, up against the, you know, the woods. That there is a very rich ecosystem up there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of trees. And there are, it, there's a lot of wildlife. As, as Max Yarchak said, we, we see multiple animals. And I am concerned about, you know, whether there has been an adequate environmental, environmental impact study associated with this, with this project. The you know, we're, we're also in a position to be very bothered by, by noise of construction and, and demolition and all of that. But I, I, I really want to emphasize the environmental concerns that is. I don't know whether it's actually accurate that, you know, somebody said there were going to be five thousand cubic yards of dirt taken off the property. I think I read that it was like fifteen hundred and I would like some clarification of the facts about that. But anyway, that's, that's still a lot of dirt that's going to be carried off this property and it's going to cause diesel fuel burning pollution of the, of the atmosphere. And it's going into the traffic on Route sixty two. And it's, and it's a disturbance. It's a real disturbance of the, of the of the property's ecosystems. That's all.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Andrews. I see Gossitt Junior with a hand up. If you could unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yes, hello. I'm, I'm James Gossitt from thirty one Bridgeport Lane. And we'll be moving to be a butters in the near future to the, the development of planned development. I guess I, you know, we've lived here for eight years and I have a lot of joy from walking down our road. You know, we have a lot of wildlife with the golf course. But the joy of hearing the, the frog in those tree frogs, when I walk down, I stress from work. That, that brings me a lot of joy. I guess I haven't done a deep dive into the information that's been provided, but I would like to know. You may have touched on it, but how does Concord assess this environmental impact? Who looks at this and how is that judged? There's a lot of foliage that will be removed. And how do we know that ecosystem will remain? I'm all for bettering and allowing the community to grow with, you know, better facilities and, and houses. But surely the ecosystem has to play a role there. And I'm not sure you can ask that. But is, does Concord have someone, the environmental, do they do a deep dive here? How, how rigorous is that assessment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gossitt. Are there any additional questions from the public or comments? So I, I think we'll proceed. And I, I will ask Mr. Seppi if he has any. Oh, I'm sorry. Stefan Bader? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
Last, last second. Thank you. Chairwoman. My question was again on the character of the roadway. Can you verify that that is a public roadway? Or are you proposing it as a private roadway?
It would be a private roadway. So it would be, God, I'm sorry.
That, that the town would not, you would not be asking the town to accept it and the homeowners would take care of snow plowing and maintenance.
That is correct.
And how would that be handled financially? That's not a condominium association. There's some sort of homeowners association or how does that work then?
With a homeowners association. It, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other last minute hands to count? If not, Mr. Seppi, do you have any remarks you'd like to make?
I would just like to thank everybody for their feedback today. And I will, I've taken a lot of notes and we'll get with my team and we'll continue to work on the plan and try to address the items that were brought up along with other items that we may get via the town staff reports. So thank you.
Thank you. So we will be, I will be recommending that we continue this hearing. And probably into one of our August meetings, say August eighth or twenty second. Would either of those dates be convenient for you?
Yes, either one would be fine.
Okay, so why don't we suggest then August eighth? At seven o'clock?
Okay.
Okay, and so I will ask someone on the board if they would make a motion that we continue this here. Would you like, do you have it in front of you, Sue?
My computer screen just froze, and it will take thirty seconds to unfreeze. I'm sorry, and I can't.
That's right. So why don't we continue the review of the definitive subdivision public hearing for the application of EMS development for the improvement of a new roadway and for the creation of four new building lots at eighty-X and ten fifty-three Main Street, parcels thirty-seven thirty and thirty-seven thirty-four to Tuesday, August eighth at seven o'clock.
Second.
And I will call the members. Rob Almiata?
Yes.
Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
Sue Felshen?
Yes.
Abby Flanagan?
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller. Yes. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next item will be a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Concord Center for the Visual Arts for a special permit with site plan review under zoning bylaw section seven point one point three, seven point seven point two point twelve, eleven point six and eleven point eight to demolish the existing Coleman Gallery and construct a two thousand five hundred ninety-three square foot addition to an existing seven thousand three hundred forty-five, forty-nine square foot non-conforming structure and relief from parking at thirty-seven Lexington Road, parcel number zero zero fifteen. At this point, members of the planning board have been provided with a draft recommendation to the Board of Appeals. And I wondered if there's anyone here from the applicant or their representatives that wishes to introduce themselves.
Yes, I'm John Battle. I'm the architect for the project, and Bob Drew from my office is also on board.
Great. Would you like to make any statement?
No, I think we've been, we've been through this many times. I think we were just, we've reviewed the letter a couple of iterations with, with the staff, and we're just prepared here to be prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. I think there may be some additional edits that came in last minute from Sue, so perhaps we could begin with those. And then we'll see if there are any further questions or comments from members of the planning board.
Heather, is this the version that I sent you right before the meeting began?
Um, yes, you sent an email with some edits, and I included those in this version.
Okay, great. I'm talking about my email from, oh my goodness, six fifty-four P M.
No, not six forty-four. Not six fifty-four. That would have been earlier.
Right.
So so Sue, can you share your screen with these new edits?
If I may.
I, I can actually bring them up. Give me just one. Can you? Okay. Thank you, Heather. And I'm sorry, Mr. Battle, have you received these edits, or these will be new to you as well?
I do not think we have received these edits. Bob, have you seen them yet?
No, the last memo we received was from just after lunch today, so twelve oh seven P M. So after this hearing, if we can get a fresh copy of the or please walk us through what, what the changes are.
If you'll see, it's largely to do with making sure that text in one place also, the same text, the new text in one place also appears in another place. And then there was a type graphical issue. These changes here all went out earlier today, this morning or afternoon, early. So you should have seen these already.
Okay, so if this is the twelve oh seven, this is, if this was part of the twelve oh seven email where I got, we received from Elizabeth, then we have the latest.
So there will be something new, but not until page five.
Well, I think then all of us have seen up to page five. Why don't we proceed to page five?
Hold on, at the bottom of page five, wait, did I mean page six? Oh, no, it's now at the top of page six. So this or I, I told you it was just typographical. I inserted the word the, so it's and the locations just for readers. And then now you will note in the next paragraph, you've already seen this language about mentioning what about the format of the agreement? So this is something that Elizabeth inserted and that you have already seen, and this same text then appears now under condition number thirty-one or thirty-two in order to agree with the version you already saw.
Okay. So this is like, it's like grammatically, this is grammatic, like just kind of clean up grammar and stuff like that in terms of terms of the orders of conditions is like, because we went through that, make sure what we have to do after this, after the approval.
Okay, with the language, the agreement will outline the use of the parking lot events and any restrictions that the condition formally just said more formal written agreement. And now the actual conditions, it will also say agreement will outline the use of the parking lots for larger events and restrictions.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarity. Yeah, we totally understand this. We came up with the last planning board hearing with you guys that we have to do some a little more formal, but honestly.
Right, and the only changes from late this afternoon were changing it to the locations of parking, and there was a redundant occurrence of six months after issuing occupancy, it just appeared twice in the condition, so that is not.
Okay, and we understand that condition too, even if, even if it's twice, we understand that something we have to do six months after we're done with the project. Got it?
Yes. Right. Everything else you should have seen already.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we, we understood everything. So thank you very much for walking us through.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from members of the planning board? And thank you, Heather and Sue, for that. Am I missing anyone? No? Okay, are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Then could I have a motion for approval of the letter of recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeal dated July twelfth for the Concord Center for the Visual Arts for a special permit with site plan review under zoning bylaw section seven point one point three, seven point seven point two point twelve, eleven point six and eleven point eight to demolish the existing Coleman Gallery and construct a two thousand five hundred ninety-three square foot addition to an existing seven thousand three hundred forty-nine square foot non-conforming structure and relief from parking at thirty-seven Lexington Road, parcel zero zero one five. May I have a motion?
I will make such a motion along those.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I will now call the role. Rob, Rob Almiata?
Yes.
Andrew Boardman?
Yes.
Sue Felshen?
Hi.
Abby Flanagan?
Hi.
And myself, Linda Miller. I. The motion is passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We go, we go to the Z B A on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, well, we will now turn to administrative items. First, we will open for general public comment. Public comment is limited to up to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone speaker. Public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. So I would like to ask, would anyone from the public wish to make a comment this evening? If not, then we will move on to the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning. As we've indicated in the past, this topic will be included at each planning board meeting. Tonight, there is no prepared presentation or planning board discussion, but we do welcome any comments or questions from the public. Each comment or question will be limited to three minutes. So I see one hand up from Ms. Carol Savoy. Carol?
Carol Savoy, sixty-one Bellknap Street. My question was, I looked at the maps that the, the GIS that are out on the website and a few months, I don't know, a few planning board meetings back. The planning board sort of had a first draft of what they thought would be, you know, included in the MBTA Act, such as the Thro Street. And this one didn't sort of have a first pass. It just showed what the areas were and what was wetlands and out of scope and that kind of thing. So has the planning board decided to just leave it open and listen to public comment about where we would like the to, to address the MBTA areas or is there some sort of first pass of what your thinking is, or where do you stand with that?
As you know, we will be holding a meeting on the twenty-sixth of July. That will be our next community workshop. And there we will be discussing the zoning boundary and language with regard to this. So this is a long project and really this step was to give people some technology assistance in terms of looking at the mapping. As you know, zoning is mapping and writing the rules and regulations, and so this is giving just more access to some technology that would be helpful in this process. So we're, we're hoping that we will get community feedback on both the technology as well as on, on the mapping through this process. Yes, Andrew?
I, I think that it's also worth mentioning that Elizabeth had mentioned when those maps were created, they were not planning maps at all. They were basically system calibration maps where they were trying to determine how wide an area would be included, so they just grabbed a random couple of lots. They don't, didn't and don't represent any plan or based on any discussion by the planning board at this point. So that's why those maps were actually removed, because they were confusing.
Yes, I would, well, I just remember there was somebody very upset and throw gardens because they were included and and then those maps just disappeared. So I guess in the, the sessions that are scheduled, the next three public sessions that are scheduled, will that be where we can start identifying those areas that would be good candidates for the MBTA Act and for building? And the zoning, when does that happen?
Exactly right.
So that will be discussed and, and people will have an opportunity to point out areas that they think would be good areas for the, to incorporate into the zoning changes and will that we then see results of that sort of, you know, the public's first pass plus, you know, all the other interested parties that are weighing in?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to.
That's the hope.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to understand the process, so that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, and if you have feedback on it, let us know. Thank you.
But you know, I will.
That's good. Okay, are there any additional questions or comments on the MBTA Communities zoning? Okay. Well, thank you. Our next item is item number three, which is to acknowledge the receipt of a letter from the Public Works Commission regarding the draft scenic rules, sorry, scenic roads, rules and regulations. The planning board has previously reviewed and commented on a draft of the rules and regulations, and this is an opportunity for anyone on the planning board to comment on either the letter or the specific items in the rules and regulations draft. So I will open that up. Yes, Sue?
Believe I received a newer copy of this letter.
A newer copy? Yes, well, it's.
It was received, what is the date of the letter?
Yes, this was a, I don't know if there's a new, yes, this was a, a new letter. Did you not see a copy of it?
It was sent out like in the last week. I have not received any such thing the last week.
All right, well then I don't know if other people would like to comment on it now, or maybe we should continue this item to our next meeting since Sue hasn't had the chance to review it. Has, have other people seen it or not?
I, I did. I, it, it actually stirred a similar question in my mind where they referenced two different boards making two different decisions about what was and was not in the right way, and I it would be interesting to figure out why that happens and how we can avoid it in the future. Maybe not two different boards, but two different town departments where it would seem like something that would be straightforward, and if it clearly isn't, then that's something that should be addressed in rules and regs.
Any other input? So then, Sue, why don't we put this again on the agenda again for our next meeting?
Thank you, and I'd be curious to know when that email went out, because I must be having some kind of problem. And I.
Yeah, I.
Sorry, is the, is the letter we're referencing the June fourteenth letter?
Yes.
Yeah, it's posted on the website.
Oh. Okay, I couldn't tell from the agenda what the date was. I might even have one as old as June fourteen.
Yeah, so it's under, yeah, I think there's that's what I see as a, as a.
It was cited in the June twentieth agenda.
Yeah, so we have the P W C letter, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Posted to the current meeting documents.
Okay, I assumed it was a newer one.
I have I think it was dated then, but I think there, it was received af- quite a bit after the dating.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so if why, why don't you see if you have that in your old documents, and if you do, then perhaps we won't add it for the next next, our next agenda.
Right.
Okay. Let us know. So next, next we'll move on to the Envision Concord Action Items Discussion. And I'll ask Heather if she can put this up on our screen. So we began going through this with Elizabeth at our last meeting, and we were running a bit late. So I think we decided to discuss it at this meeting in terms of action items. And I guess we can just work through items that are related to each section. And
Sorry. Would it make sense? Yeah. Given that Elizabeth isn't here tonight, I feel like she's kind of an integral part of this process. I, I hate to push this off to another meeting, but I think her input is kind of crucial to this discussion. She's kind of the architect of all of this. So my suggestion would be unfortunately that we delay this to another meeting when she is available. I don't know how other, other planning board members feel about that, but I feel like that might be prudent.
I am not unhappy with that, but I would certainly like to hear if that's the general sentiment for the board this evening.
I think that's a good idea as well.
And I also concur.
Okay. Well, I'll tell Elizabeth that we, we couldn't proceed without her and she'll know that she, she knows already. I'm sure that she's invaluable, but this will only confirm it. So thank you. And if, if any of, anyone has any public comment with regard to the substance of the envisioned conquered action items, then welcome to raise your hand now or come back to our meeting in two weeks. Seeing none, I think the next item is the 300, 310 Baker Avenue, Novo Riverside Common Comprehensive Permit. And I think here we can understand that the select board, I don't know if Mary is still on.
I'm still here.
You're still here. I believe that the select board is interested in getting input from various town departments and committees with regard to the Novo Riverside project. And here I I will ask you, what is the timeframe that you would like the planning board to respond?
That's a good question. I know we've got to have our letter put together by August 8th. So when it, sometime before that.
So our, our next meeting, I guess we should have we should have information that Elizabeth can have a letter from us to you. We would need to approve that at our next meeting, which means that we need to discuss that at this meeting. And or if we do not have, you know, we can always follow up with communications to Elizabeth with additional thoughts if we have them after this meeting because I, I know people have only had a very brief introduction with mass housing. But I don't think we're going to have any opportunity to ask questions between now and then of either mass housing or the developer. So let's see if we have any thoughts on the part of the planning board for people who are able to go to the mass housing presentation or for people who may have looked at the information on the zoning board of appeals site with regard to this development. Or who may have just gone over and taken a look at the site themselves. Are there any thoughts? I, I had one thought and that is it seemed to me that there was an excessive amount of parking spaces possibly for this development. And I thought there was a, a lack of any kind of amenities, especially outdoor amenities for for the development and that perhaps we could encourage the developer to somewhat balance that out. And what I would like to see of a development that has 200 units is perhaps a that's family friendly is perhaps taking out some of those parking spaces and putting in a play area or some kind of area for children that would be in the development. I know Rideout isn't that far away, but I also think it's, it's, you know, nice to be able to go out and play if you're a small child and just outside where you live, not necessarily have to go all the way over to, to ride out for a larger playground. But that, that was one thought that I had. Did anything strike anyone else with the brief introduction we've had to this development?
I was able to attend the presentation although with my 20 month old. So I spent some, some period of time chasing him away from the beehives. But I think for those that weren't able to attend and Linda, if you, if I misstate anything, I think what I took away from the public feedback in terms of questions that were asked and follow up that was requested. I think the general sentiment was that it was a good deal of what would be deemed affordable housing. It was in a reasonable location that's fairly walkable. There were concerns about the environmental impact in terms of tree removal in that there's a limited treescape on that property to begin with, because it's for those that aren't, like can't picture where it is. When you drive into the Atreus Health kind of Welch's Emerson complex there, it's the, the green open space with the pond or lake to the left. And so concerns about tree removal, concerns about impervious, additional impervious surface and parking. I think there was some concerns about traffic impact in terms of, and the police who were on the visit as well said, you know, they'd like more information as that Main Street Baker Ave intersection is already kind of deemed problematic. So there was concerns about that. So I think there was my general sense that there was a balancing of this is an opportunity for a substantial amount of affordable, higher density housing. But we have some kind of general concerns about the scale and scope of that project. I agree that if it's going to be kind of quote unquote, family friendly, it's certainly walkable. It would certainly, you know, it's in line with our MBTA zoning and that type of thing. It's very walkable to the West Concord Station. It's walkable to other amenities and shopping district and all of that. So I think you have, it could have some positive environmental impact, but I think there was a lack of clarity around some of the other potentially more negative impact. But that was the general sense I got from the questions that the public was, was asking during the presentation. So that's my, that's my two cents.
And I think that's a great summary. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say in terms, in terms of walkability, if the Assabette footbridge gets built, then it's very walkable. And not only that, there is, it's not a formal place space, but there's access to some pretty decent natural areas, but without the footbridge, the walking distance to the center of town down Baker Ave and across the Main Street Bridge over the Assabette is notoriously not a good walking area. Now, of course, it's on the town to get that footbridge built, but since we don't have it yet, I think that has a bearing on the project. And particularly, I want to second Abby's comment that if you have small children, well, Abby, you have small children, you could comment on it. If you had to shlep your toddler all the way to Rideout on foot or bike on the roadways, you might be ready to turn around and come back by the time you.
Yeah, Rideout, I would not say would be accessible by foot or by bike or by scooter necessarily for my age demographic, maybe for my oldest. The rail trail would be accessible. You know, for my oldest, so that's a, that's a nice amenity to have there. But certainly if it's geared towards families, you're going to end up with kids just riding their bikes in the parking lot at Atreus. And so I think some sort of, yeah, some sort of community space, that type of thing would probably be amenity that would be worth pursuing.
Definitely. If it's only for the toddler set, it wouldn't take up nearly as much room as a place space for larger children who could go a little further away. I don't know if it could be possible to remove some parking spaces, but it wouldn't take very many to make enough room just for a little kitty.
Anything else from the planning board? So.
Particular comment mirrored the concern about just the sheer volume of parking. And it seemed like it was jammed in every square inch. And I just, I don't understand if that's strictly necessary or it's just a nice to have on their part for overflow for the other buildings. I have no idea. But it just seemed a little much.
Can we say a public comment? Pamela Drit?
Hi, Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I'm in a butter, I guess. I really thought it was, if it turns out to be like it was represented, it's likely to be very good environmentally. I was careful about the trees that were existing in that area. Most of the footprint of the building is on parking lot. So it would be very little disturbance of the beautiful riverfront, lakefront there. And most of the important trees there are planned on being kept, which is very good. They're also going to have a path through next to the water to meet from border road to the proposed footbridge, which will be nice. And in terms of parking for 200 units, you need at least 200 parking spots, one per unit. And this has more than that. And the thing that I thought was excellent is that they have underground parking under both these buildings. So the amount of spread out parking in the, the, the parking area will be much less than any kind of housing unit like that would normally have. And I think that is excellent. I think we need to make sure that they wire those so that we could have electric vehicle charging that goes with the units. And they are also planning to look into solar and other environmentally good things. So the fact that not a lot of environmentally sensitive area is going to be disturbed, no hills being cut down and earth removed aside from digging down to put the parking garages under the buildings. And a lot of the good trees to remain was very encouraging in the site walk. And the fact that we would then have our 40B apparently eligibility set forever again, because all of them apparently would qualify as affordable for 40B, I think, for our 40B.
SHI.
Yeah. And that would be very good. Also, we would be able to have no worries about being one of the 10 communities on the, the plan for all electric building like we tried to do. I, I think it's a good idea. I hope that we can do all we can to make it happen. And hopefully we could then use the, behind the prison area to go back towards less, not family, because we will have plenty of family right there. And go back to what we really need as senior assisted living housing.
Thank you. Mary Hartman?
Thank you, Linda. Again, I'm speaking now as, as in a butter, not as a member of the select board, but I was at the site visit and I think I'd echo Abby's comments. I think the general feeling was, was good that we need, we know we need housing in Concord and we need this price point housing, not just the affordable, but also the workforce housing that this will, will provide for the town. So I think people are welcoming that. But I will say that one of the, two of the concerns I heard was the fire chief was concerned about the height of the buildings and having access. Remember, these are five story buildings. These are bigger than, I can't think of another building in town. The Muse or I think it's called Prescott Village now is three stories high. Maybe the Cummings Building is a, is the, I don't know, these buildings are tall. Okay. They're really large and so we're not used to having that height of building in, in Concord and the parking doesn't concern me as much as the volume of traffic. We've pointed out before that Baker Ave has a traffic problem. When the train pulls into the West Concord Station, that intersection at Main Street and Baker Ave wedges. And I know they're redesigning that, but that's not going to do anything about the volume of cars we're going to have. So those, you know, those are the, the, I'm trying to balance what I heard and I think generally people were in favor of it, but there are still some concerns about the, the height, the access for fire and safety and and the volume of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Bader?
Thank you. Stefan Bader, 7 River Street. I neglected to give my address before, sorry. I was there. I, I think it's a good location for that kind of housing. It is walkable. The Assabette River Bridge, I hope to see finished in my lifetime. It seems to be well on the way, even if it's not construction ready next year. The thing that I had questions about is the underground parking. I don't quite see how underground parking can be made flood proof, given that it will be lower than the water level. That's a little bit of a mystery to me. And so I was wondering if the fire department may be called on to help pump out the garage as if and when either it floods or probably they won't call the fire department if they develop a leak through cracks somewhere, but I it's next to the pond. I don't understand the engineering. They're not building the some of their tunnel. So I guess I don't understand the engineering challenges with parking in what is essentially below the water table. But other than that, I think it's a great location. I think it'll be a good addition. And it is true that it will put Concord back over the 10% threshold to Pamela's earlier comment. I think there will be some earth removal because they're going to build a retaining wall on that slope that is now grass to move the entryway over to make room for the building. But I agree that most of the mature trees would be preserved. So, and finally, they have in their plans, it's technically not part of the project as such. But in order to make up for the parking that they're losing to the building footprint, they want to put a parking deck between the Welch's and the Atreus Building. So that they say their tenants need that for the office space. So there, there will be more parking there. I don't know how that will affect children riding bicycles in the parking lot. They may be able to ride skateboards up and down the parking garage ramp. We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela, did you have a further thought?
Yes, I forgot to mention that I don't think they've investigated what they're going to do about sewage, because I don't see how that can be connected to our town sewage. because I don't see how that can be connected to our town sewage plan. And I don't see how they could do anything other. But I don't know. I, I'm not so worried Stefan about the waterproofing of the underground garages because I asked them that question and they said, no, no, we got this. They build tunnels and they do things that make it waterproof. If it comes, comes in from outside and down the, the, the garage during a flood, that might be different. But but, but they seem to think it's run of the mill. But I don't know about how would they connect 300 families to sewer?
Their plan does seem to call for that.
Okay, well, I think we can forward some of these thoughts to Elizabeth so that she can forward them to the, with others from the planning department to the select board. And if anyone thinks of other items later, please, you know, send them separately onto her. With that, are there any planning board liaison updates? I believe we have no minutes. So with that, I will wish everyone a good evening and thank everyone who has attended the meeting tonight. I would also mention that I believe on the 13th, there is a, an opportunity for anyone to participate in a connect hour with the planning staff from four to 5:00 PM at Concord Tea Cakes. And there will be a similar event on Zoom on July 20th at noon to 1:00 o'clock. So again, that, that has to do with the MB, MBTA communities programs. So I hope to see you all over at Tea Cake soon. Thanks and good night.